That was a fireman, the M T, and he dug, he really dug into this. Uh, and he got to the plume. You know what a plume is? Okay, he brought a charge. And this plume, there's a charge and there's a, wherever there's a ru- rupture, there's a circle, inner circle. Anyone that's in that is dead. It's as simple as that. There's an outer circle around that. Is you're gonna have probably lung issues and other stuff will happen. You'll probably die from it eventually. So, um, anyway, that was pretty interesting. In fact, in Armstrong, he, uh, this Dan Harveys, isn't he? He came to our council meeting and they immediately sent in a, uh, opposition to the I U B. It's scary because just imagine, just imagine. Uh, let's just take, uh, Sway City. Um, we have a rupture there. If you have a south wind ten miles an hour, which that's pretty common, it blows towards Sway City. They cannot evacuate that town fast enough. Think we've got a school there too. Something like, think about it a little bit. Uh, there will be ruptures with our freezing con. There will be. Um. Can you imagine the chaos if this happens? Can you imagine all of them? Trying to get your kid, can't do it. You can't get in there. When this goes, you can't get in there. Who's gonna go in there? M T is not gonna go in there. We don't have any equipment for that. The nearest equipment is in Mason City. Just something to keep in mind. What, there is something else. Uh. With these pipelines, their investment group called BlackRock is behind us. BlackRock is China, just so you know. We know that because I watched Fox Business, maybe some of the others. I, I've heard it. They, they talk about it. I've probably four or five times. They say China is heavily involved with BlackRock. So that's something to keep in mind. What, what would BlackRock want to do with this? Well, you gotta realize that C O two is used to, used to euthanize homes and chickens. But it's China wanna use your imagination. Um, it's also on the internet. So you can look up BlackRock on the internet, look like it. Um. Also, I just wanna mention that you as a board should have a joint meeting with, uh, Emmett County. They're really on top of all this. You'll get so much information from them. So, I mean, I, I just think it'd be a good idea for you as a board, county, landowners, community. It'd be a good idea. Um, also, now this is, if this, if this goes through, which we don't know for sure. If it does, what they did, um, Emmett County, they hired an outfit called Snyder and Associates. They're construction technicians. So, they're from Ford died.
We, we did as well.
Oh, you did? Okay, good, good. So, it doesn't go there or something.
I don't wanna cut you off, but we've heard everything that you've said five times already.
I know, good.
And I'm gonna say, we can't stop it. Kasuth County and Emmett County is not gonna stop it. You're, you're gonna have to go to Des Moines and raise a state with your.
It's gonna happen. It's gonna happen.
You're gonna have to, cuz we're not gonna stop it countywide. I don't care how much money we spend or who we hire. We're not gonna buck the I U B and we're not gonna buck the Senate House in Des Moines.
Mm-hmm.
We just can't.
Okay. I would, if I was you, I'd do what you can. That's what.
We're, we're doing what, we're doing what we can.
And you're pretty serious.
Don't, don't put your faith in Kasuth County or Emmett County stopping this project.
No, there, this is a.
I mean, don't, don't get your hopes up that we're gonna do anything that's gonna stop it.
Can you try?
We are trying.
Yes, that's all they have.
Yeah, and, and we've had several conversations, so thank you.
Yeah, but Kasuth County and Emmett County and Hamlet County are not gonna stop the pipeline coming across Iowa.
Yeah, but you keep your, you can, you can let them know that.
Right. We have Senator Goof has filed against the pipeline and you said the Republican Party is disowning him in Des Moines. So there's a lot of pro in Des Moines that you're gonna have to fight. And I've talked to Senator Black and he agrees with me. Senator Goof agrees with me.
Henry Stone's very vocal against eminent domain. I've had quite a few conversations with him.
What are you people for? Against it or for it?
We're against it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how many months ago it's been, we wrote a letter for both projects opposing it. We, we, we've done multiple things in regards to the pipelines. But when it comes to the agenda item that we'll have later, that's, there's a lot of reasons to that puzzle. And when it comes down to spending a couple hundred thousand dollars or potentially more on something that has little to no chance to make any difference, why would you do it?
When Mr. Whipple gets ahold of you, are you gonna back what I, see, I'm a little supervisor. I haven't been out for a month. So I've dealt with all this C O two stuff. Are you gonna back my setbacks? That a half mile from my house instead of a quarter mile?
That's what, that's what our.
Two and a half miles from, uh, the town?
That's what our intentions are and that's what we're bringing to the zoning commission.
Cuz when that stuff travels thirteen hundred feet in four minutes, I'm a half mile from, I'm dead. Playing simple. So, I just hope you guys back to what the setbacks that I proposed when I was in the board. Hope you guys back.
I was at the Hazmat meeting in Mason City the other day and the fire department in Mason City doesn't even have enough equipment to address the C O two piece, pipeline rupture. There's nobody in the state of Iowa does that they do a. Anything else?
I got something other than the pipeline, sure.
You're on the agenda.
No, I got something else too.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, on the third, when the new board took over, you guys voted for the sheriff to leave the jail fifty bucks prisoner. He wants how much percent raise? He wants twenty seven percent raises for his jailers. And he can bring more revenue in. Why don't you jack it to seventy-five to a hundred bucks a night for the prisoners? They gotta pay them. You know, Emmett brings their prisoners over, they gotta pay the season. So why don't we get more revenue out of them? If he wants to keep spending so much money, try and get a little more revenue out of the jail.
It's a good idea. We'll bring it up.
It, it goes both ways in that regard because they've held some for us as well and probably will through the course of history. So that is a two-sided equation for starters. And second, as the code lays out, the elected officials and county government are more of a horizontal leadership rather than vertical. It's not the board supervisors over everyone. We control the budget. But the sheriff, the auditor, the other elected officials have a wide authority under their department. As was explained down in Isaac at New Officer School here this last week.
The other thing I gotta bring up is, uh, it's on the agenda today for, uh, the old U V C building. Why is that even being brought up again? We gave them a chance when I was on the board. They broke it. They shouldn't be able to park there. Cuz why don't you take your vehicles right now in the park in front of the fire department and see how far you're gonna go? It's the same principle. Go park in front of the ambulance to shed. It's the same principle.
Should've done something when you were on board then.
Even given that somebody is not part of your situation. Get you nowhere.
I'm not.
Well, I just hope you two newbies bring it up. Think about it. Cuz I ain't gonna get nowhere with Staker. He hasn't liked me for two years and I haven't liked him for two years, so I ain't gonna talk to him.
Yeah, it won't be discussable.
Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen, for coming in. We appreciate it. Hope you go to Des Moines and raise a state. Utilities board is hearing it right now.
No.
So, from what I read, the whole, so far, everything that they posted on it and all the safety regulations are federal and they're gonna follow the federal rules on safety. So you're not gonna win the safety cuz you're gonna buck the federal government. Nobody's got enough money to win that one. So you're gonna have to do it on utilities board not following eminent domain.
What's the eminent domain? What? Okay. Uh, can they, can they eminent domain us right now?
No, no.
Not until they're granted by the utilities board.
You know what?
They're not. They don't have the right to.
Not until they are granted it by the utilities board. That's their decision.
What percentage do they have to have signed up before they can do that?
They don't need a percentage.
Well, they don't need a percentage.
There's bills that are proposed.
Is that where they're screwing out to get people to sign up?
Yes. Yeah. It, it'd look a lot better if they had sixty, seventy percent.
And that's what the legislature's trying to do right now is they're trying to get a, a specific number, whether that's eighty-five, ninety percent of easements that need to be signed up in order to use eminent domain in that case. So, see where that goes.
An easement is a saleable item. An easement is a saleable item. So in other words, if they give easements, they can sell it to a foreign country. And they can put a building on it. They can put anything.
But we can't do nothing with it.
We can't do that.
Okay.
But they tax, we can do that.
Yeah.
On the grant over under on, I think.
Yeah.
If there's nothing else, we're gonna go ahead and go on to the meeting. Thank you, gentlemen, for coming. We do appreciate it. Wish we had the power.
Or you'd kick us out.
I'm just, I don't wanna cut anybody off.
You can stay. You can stay for the discussion on the navigator.
Yeah, you can stay.
Is there more going to be?
We're truly not kicking you out.
What, done it? It's coming? Okay.
Yeah. I need a motion to approve the agenda in January seventeenth. Motion by Stacker, second by Quack. Any discussion or correction? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote, motion carried unanimous. In your iPad, you have the safety minutes. Take a minute to look at it if you have it. Let the record show that we acknowledge the safety minutes. Next, we have the wellness minutes. Take a minute to look at it. If you haven't looked at it before, any questions? Seeing none. Let the record show that we acknowledge the safety minutes. Wellness. We have the mileage claim submitted by Casey.
Before you, um, talk to Galen about that, I just wanted to let you know that I made copies for you of the claims he submitted. The last two pages that he originally submitted have been taken off because, uh, that was our mistake. Galen had asked if he was paid for anything but twenty twenty-one and we said that he was not paid for the second half. We were incorrect with that. So that was our mistake. We gave him that information. So those last two pages have been taken off because that, that was, the rest of it is for twenty-one.
The, the last two or the first two?
The last two. You don't have them in that packet cuz I already heard them. You have them in your, you know, but I said in Ohio, but it's not in that packet.
And I'm the one that found the mistake.
It is. See, Galen is the one that called and said that he had already been paid for that. And so then that's when we know that he did let us know that. Thank you.
So the accusations of me not being honest and all the rest of it.
I didn't.
You didn't look it up? It's not my job. Will you? I ain't going over here. I'm just showing that I'm modest.
Do I have a motion to approve the claims submitted by Galen Casey?
I'll make the motion. Carter?
Second?
I did go through each of the minutes. I, I went through each of the minutes from twenty twenty-two. And there was one meeting that was a mistake and, uh, so took care of that.
So is that on here or not?
The one that was the mistake.
Yeah, that's, that's still, still listed on here.
It is?
Yep.
May I speak, Chair?
Yes.
I went on, I, you will not see on the minutes or the sheet, the seventh. I was at a meeting on the seventh. You can even ask Carter, he lifted up. But I wrote down that as the day I took off. I made a mistake. Twenty-first is when I was on vacation. So I didn't get paid for a day I was here and I'm getting accused of one that I wasn't here. It all works out the same way. I wrote the wrong date. Well, then add the seventh to the sheet and take the twenty-first off. I wrote the wrong date down.
Yes, and there's other meetings that I supervise meetings that we go out and look at file and everything else and don't turn it in, so.
There's many times I've been to the courthouse and don't write it down, I was.
Right.
There's many times I head towards the farm and I don't write it down cuz I'm heading to the farm. So I'm just saying, I made a mistake and wrote the seventh instead of the twenty-first. And when you were looking at the minutes, Kyle, trying to find something, didn't you notice that, hey, he was at the meeting on the seventh, but he didn't write it down on the sheet?
Can, can we, can we amend the motion to mark that, that change and that it's the mistake made? Meaning the seventh person could only.
The date is, is, it should be changed.
Correct, correct.
It remained the same, but the dates were changed. Thank you, Carter. I have a motion and second on the floor. Hearing no more discussion, I will call for a roll call vote, please.
So, the other thing which I.
I call for a roll call vote.
Well, should allow completely discuss.
There's another issue here. This was turned in after the calendar year and it was signed by Galen, this department head, when he's not an employee. I visited with Elizabeth yesterday. That is not exactly kosher. It needs to be signed by someone who has lived in the department.
I was told to sign it, Mr. Stacker. I did what I was told. And if you're talking about me being late, I talked to the auditor and I said, when do you need this? She said, whenever you wanna bring it in, Galen, bring it in.
I did sign it for you.
Thank you.
So, I signed it, so it's legal. So let's do a roll call vote then.
Matt?
Yes.
Wacker?
Yes.
Stacker?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes. Motion carried.
Uh, I apologize on behalf of the Attorney's Office if he made you, if our mistake, um, made you look, um, bad. That was not our intention at all. It was a mistake on our part. So I apologize.
You're human. You're all human.
I made a mistake and wrote the seventh instead of the twenty-first. We're all human.
In no way would we, we mean that you were, that you made this, that you, you did anything that has to go. So I apologize.
Thank you.
Thanks for being out. The liquor license. Bring you everything in order?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the liquor license? Motion by Stacker, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Matt? Any discussion on the liquor license? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Thank you for any. We are up to court of every courts. In your folder, you will see that you have the court of every courts ordered, ordered, the sheriff and vector's affairs. Is there any questions on any of those? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve? By Matt, second by Quack. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. I oppose. Motion carried unanimous. Next, we have a decision to approve the treasures. We, we have the science report.
Just front page.
Now, if I don't answer it. No, I would, I thought maybe since, uh, uh, Josh and Carter knew, I could just explain a little bit of the scenario real quick. Just basic things like the first two columns would be the fund number and the fund name. And then the, uh, next column would be the balance as of July first, twenty twenty-two. And then, uh, next column, we would have the revenues since that date to the end of December of twenty twenty-two. And then the total to be accounted for. Disbursements for that time period would be the next column and then the fund balance would be, uh, the column where we're at, uh, at the end of the calendar year. And then, um, auditor's warrants outstanding, that's what has not gone through the system that they've been issued, but they have not been redeemed. So.
So that's just.
That number has gotten smaller since then.
Has it?
Yes.
That was a big number.
Yeah, yeah. It's, and, and it's continued to decrease a little bit, so. So we're about, but we're almost finished, uh, with the calling in, so.
That's good.
Yeah. So, and then, and then it goes on, uh, with all the, it breaks down the revenues, um, on the following page or page and a half. And then after that, uh, it shows the expenses as far as, uh, the, the, you know, auditor's warrants and then the school orders and just any other expenses that are. And then, uh, at the end, it shows the, the, uh, final balance of the, uh, semi annual is twenty-seven million, nine hundred eighty-four thousand, four hundred eighty-five dollars and twenty-four cents.
Always had a question. Where does a hospital taxes they receive, where do they accumulate? Do they go through the book totally or just goes?
Yeah. No, no, it, it goes through, it goes through, um, on twenty-one, two hundred treasures orders, uh, by computer. That's when, I mean, we collect and I guess it's not, it's not broken out. Uh, but we collect and then that is what the fifteen million, six hundred and thirty-five thousand is what has been collected for the schools, the cities, hospital, um, egg extension and things like.
For all the other levels?
No, that's not like general, general basic and.
No, besides the county ones.
Is that for the, that, a toll rate?
No, that's, that's, that's broken down set, but that's behind the, I mean, that, uh.
That never gets put into your.
No.
No, the hospital does.
Yes. The hospital, we do collect. They're, they are on, um, they are on the, uh, property tax statement adds of, um.
Right, they're separate.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's in with like the assessor and, and things like that. Trust and agency is what it's called. There's just too many to list.
The ambulance, when that goes through, where will that be at?
That's, that's, uh, that's a, that department after the county, so.
It will go through your company.
I don't, no, I don't believe so.
Yeah, no, but at some point, I think we're, we're supposed to be tracking all these numbers. How do we find out what they are?
It, it'll be tracked. It's just, this is just kind of a broad summary. But, uh, I mean, it, just like anything else, where the board, you know, decides this much money should go to, um, the libraries and things like that. I don't have that broken out in here.
You don't find it?
No.
And we have the handle on that beforehand.
Yeah.
We're the hospital. We're just kind of an after fact.
Well, they have their own board and they, they have their own.
But then they call, people call me up and say, do you see how much the hospital costs? We don't have answers as to what.
Right, right.
We don't wanna act like we don't know what's going on.
But, uh, it, it is in that number as far as like the, uh, uh, auditor's warrant or, um, treasures orders paid.
Okay. Thank you, Nick.
Well, it need, it needs to be approved and then, and then, uh, and then I will go ahead and, and have it published.
And then we'll, you don't need us to sign it, or?
I don't think you've ever signed it before.
Okay.
No.
I need a motion to approve the treasurer's semi annual report.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Stacker, second by.
Elsa.
Quack. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried. Thank you. We are up to get to eighty-seven. Right to lease asset policy.
You talked about, we talked about this last week and approved it. And I'm, we're talking to, um, Elizabeth from Gardner and company who does our auditing. And she made me aware of, um, a suggestion that's coming from the G F A O A, which is the Government Finance Officers Association. And they are recommending that the amount for recording be at or above fifty thousand instead of five thousand. Um, because people don't care if we're recently financed machine for five thousand, they, that it, that's way too low. So that's what they're recommending. So, um, she thought we may want to consider raising that from five to fifty. So I did amend that and, um, wanted to talk to you, just wanted to see if that was something you're comfortable with and are still approving the new right to lease assets, so I can sign it.
And that's all? I mean, I'm assuming that's fine with all of this and Gardner for.
Yeah, yeah, it, it came.
Reporting. Yeah, well, they're respecting it. That's what I figured.
Anybody wanna make a motion to go with the recommended dollar amount from our auditor at fifty thousand?
I'll make the motion.
Matt, second?
I'll say it.
Stacker, any discussion? The only discussion I have that should have said is that number reported is, uh, is housing in first place.
Yeah, right.
The, um, secret comes from the, um, Secretary of State.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Vote. Motion carried unanimous. Now we're up to the decision withdrawn from the Navigator Pipeline I D P proceedings. Mr. Stacker, you put that on the agenda?
Yeah, so when we got emails on, it was Thursday, Friday, while we were down at Isaac. I had asked Tammy about that because we got updates from Whipple. And he said we would need to formally withdraw from the Navigator Pipeline if we were to, if we were intending to save money on that as we had discussed a couple weeks ago. So, had some conversations with him and Tammy and that's how ended up putting it on the agenda. I've had several phone calls in regards to pipeline since then, but I guess open for any thoughts or discussion that way.
What I've read so far, we were included with the I U T L I D's board.
Even without signing that.
Right.
Which is. Right, and that should have qualified as our official stance on it.
Well, at work you're signed, according to what Mr. Well, at the time, according to what Mr. Whipple told me, what you signed, what you approved when I was gone, was the sharing of the cost with the other counties, that was it.
Okay.
So that um.
So there, there is a motion prior to that that referenced both pipelines, so that's what he had used to start the process on both.
Okay.
But to form, to actually change that, we would need a formal motion to withdraw from this one. But he did say it would save us a considerable amount of money and we had a substantial conversation about it. While I had to run out of one meetings, obviously, but um yeah, I guess it's had several conversations, but I'd say my position's pretty, pretty much the same as what it was before.
You guys know that right now in the Senate, they are talking about limiting the amount of dollars that we can tax to two percent. They're also talking about limiting what we can add on to the property to assess value.
And and in addition to that stuff, we have a conversation that we had in open in regards to a lot of this is going to be decided at the state or federal level, there's already safety standards at the federal level, whether any of us in this room agree or disagree. They already have standards there.
Supersede our decisions regardless of.
Yeah. There's, there's never been a level of county government that's had success fighting the federal government.
Well, I, I'm more worried about the budget, we're not gonna have money to pay attorney's.
And, and that's.
There's no way that we're gonna have a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand for attorney's fees. We're gonna, you're gonna have to slash every other budget to pay attorney.
And if there was money, we probably have things that it would be better spent on.
And it's retroactive if they don't certify. So what is why this year? So it's something to think about and the buck stops with us, so.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
One thing to say, please. You guys are worried about money.
Yeah.
Okay, makes sense, but when Summit comes after us and sues us, the lawyer takes over, our insurance takes over, it don't cost us nothing.
No, our insurance won't pay that.
That's what I was told from a good source.
Our insurance won't pay the attorney fees.
Okay. Just told once they sue us and then we go to court, that, that's where that's supposed to start taking place.
Yeah, so that's, that's another reason why people have to talk to their senators and also representatives, they're not being even realistic on how they're approaching tax overhaul at the state level, so there's no way the county can function on a two percent a year increase. Wages, you know, are increased more than two percent a year, we have the amendment system that got voted in. So there's a million dollars, you're gonna have to pull out of something else, we don't, I have no idea where we can find a million dollars to pay for the amendment system out of what we have.
That'd be a separate levy, so I don't know if that counts.
Well, they haven't told me any different. They're putting us between a rock and a hard place on how we're supposed to fund government functions in the county.
We don't, we don't get a print money at the county level like they do at the federal.
No, well, even the state. This county.
They, the state hasn't, the state has the issue of cutting services and telling the counties they need to do it, so then they, they act like their budget's great, but it's really passing the buck to someone else.
And we've never borrowed money in this county, so I, I hate to start.
What's Tim Whipple's bill to this point?
I don't know, he's not.
Seven or eight thousand, I think, off the top of my head.
It's not outrageous, it's doable.
Not yet, but if you start doing that every month, it'll add up pretty quick.
But your first billing is for him for drafting the ordinance that was proposed, correct?
And he's representing us like for the IO Utilities Board.
Which was one meeting, right?
As of yet.
Right.
At two hundred and forty dollars an hour for reviewing, reviewing is for our lawyer, do you call him brief?
There's, there's quite a bit.
Time at the meeting. And conversations with the auditor and conversations with.
Which was all gonna be incurred initially to get uh an ordinance drafted, I mean, he stated in that one meeting that nothing had been updated since like, what, sixty-four, sixty-five, if I recall, I mean, so he probably found a couple of things there that shouldn't be addressed anyways.
Right now, we're doing the budget, what do we put in, fifty thousand for this? And there's no money after that.
We also have the fact that if or when an ordinance gets approved, we're pretty much guaranteed to get sued by Summit, if not Navigator as well. So that's when the bill will get substantial very quickly.
But I mean, you take the risk of sitting up there weekly getting sued if somebody said, I mean.
No, it's not quite that simple, no.
What precedent do you set if you uh withdraw from Navigator and um stay on at Summit and then in case of litigation, Summit say, well, you don't care about Navigator's pipeline, but you're opposing ours?
Well.
I, I don't think that has to.
The only reason you got to stop it is the IO Utilities Board, so if you're registered against it with the IO Utilities Board, it doesn't matter if Summit or Navigator.
And what comes of the Summit proceedings will well, transfer on to the Navigator, being that they're behind.
It'll, it'll set a precedent, so everything, everything that Summit gets, you can probably almost guarantee that Navigator's gonna have the same thing.
I agree with you, I'd like to be able to spend a lot of money on attorney fees, but there's a lot of people in this county, this, this room would be a lot fuller if we spent four hundred thousand on attorney fees.
Right, but cur- currently, FMSA has no safety regulations set in place for CO2 pipeline, correct?
They're federal.
I understand that, but you said on the federal supersede, but they currently have nothing set forth for a CO2 pipeline.
No, and we can't supersede what the federal says, the federal says all pipeline. They're, they're discussing that right now in Utilities Board. And they're saying that the federal safety rules will apply to the CO2 pipelines.
They don't have specific rules yet regarding a CO2 pipeline.
Right.
Right, right, that's on the table for FMSA to, to decide in, in, in the next six months.
Yep.
And they, one of their discussions is that they could grant it back to local ordinances to be followed because of the lack of information, no.
That's not.
Next, right.
Yeah. I'm not gonna say that's gonna happen.
No.
Mr. Stecker, you put it on the agenda, why is your?
I, I would say same as I did a couple of weeks ago, I think we should withdraw from Navigator one and eliminate the duplication in that regard.
How many volunteer easements do you have on that Navigator Pipeline in your territory, Kyle, do you know?
Haven't gotten an update from them, I did see an update on Summit here, I think it was Summit, actually. And it, it was fairly red yet, um.
I don't think Summit's got thirty percent because who's counting?
They got twenty-nine easements signed?
Yeah, something like that, they don't have a lot.
I, yeah, it probably is about, not all worked.
I, I just looked at last night, that it's under thirty, looking at numbers for Navigator. I haven't seen any.
Haven't gotten them yet, but they're, they're in the early stages of getting the go, getting agreements and stuff, I don't know if they've even tried to get easements here much.
Any of you guys signed an easement yet with them or know of anybody that did?
There's a lot of them, but I.
I don't know.
Have you even, have you even been contacted by them?
I, I know people that have been contacted.
Oh, we've been contacted, we've been contacted.
We've been done, yeah.
But nobody's given yet, you know.
They, they're offering us nothing. Yeah, I don't know. For, they don't seem to own the land.
Are you getting any feedback from anybody in your district, Kyle?
So actually between the people that are against it and the people that are supporting it quietly, because they're not gonna be showing up to meetings to support it, but it's actually been fairly even split in that regard. And I know, I completely agree with all the concerns, I'm not supporting eminent domain in any regard for this. There's, there's a lot of aspects to this, but at the same token, the thing that I really come down to is how we spend the tax dollars that everyone's paying to fight on one side or the other. And especially fighting a fight that doesn't apply to this level of government. It's not something we have jurisdiction over, so I feel like that's a very steady uphill fight at best.
But the IO Utilities Board did say that they would um consider jurisdiction to local ordinances to be followed. So if nothing's in place or nothing's set forth at the local level, then they get freelance to come through the county?
We arguably go with an ordinance, we're going ahead with the ordinance for sure.
But if you withdraw from Navigator, will the ordinance be countywide or will be pipeline specific?
It'll be countywide.
It'll still be county.
All, all ordinances are countywide.
Yeah.
I.
But that will likely be challenged by Summit if not Navigator as well, and then you get into that issue as well.
Well, I'm, as of right now, I don't know if they're gonna save any money by not supporting the Navigator suit because they're kind of tied together.
They're, they're separate, they're.
But one's ahead of the other.
Yeah, timeline, they're separate, they're separate projects, they're looked at independently, at the IUB, they're, they're all separate, so it's, it's, it might be um similar processes for the two of them, but it's separate set of paperwork and all that for each process. So we, for sure, cut the bill in half.
Have you guys heard of a third one coming through?
That's in Southern Iowa.
Yeah, I've heard, so I saw that.
Third, there's supposed to be another one coming in Iowa.
That's further south, yeah.
Yeah, last time I heard it was down south, picked up to Southern.
Wolf or whatever.
Yeah.
So Kyle, just for record, you're the only one that's talked to Tim Whipple out of the board members on this matter?
I communicate with him on Friday, I can't speak for anyone else.
I haven't talked to him lately. Not since he's been hired. Somebody, you wanna make a motion, Kyle, or is it somebody else?
I would make a motion to withdraw from the Navigator Pipeline proceedings.
If I had a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second by Whacker, any more discussion? Do a roll for all vote, please.
Now?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Stecker?
Yes.
Josh?
No. Motion carried three to one. Thank you, guys. Okay, which year did you follow on? You see County EMS Day? That's why I. Phil, EMS Day.
So EMS Days are annual, countywide.
We do it to county, uh when we start the system, we allow all members that are in good standing with the Sioux County EMS to attend this conference free of charge. So we're not charging them for the training or the um or the food for the day. We've always provided food, but last year we had to do a change on the processing that, that actually has to go through the, the board for approval for public purpose to provide the meal for the day, so the class, the class is an eight to four to five-ish area, so it's a full day class. Probably a light lunch over an hour for the class, so we just have to have record that we approved the meal for the day for our purchases.
I would move that we approve the purchase of food for the EMS Day.
The public.
Medical services, public, purpose statement for EMS education. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Ah, you're up next, bylaws.
So I did get an email from Todd last night about eleven o'clock. Because I sent to me bylaws to ask him to review these prior to the meeting for today, he sent me a copy back last night, did he make the corrections? He did make some corrections, um it's still, it's still a draft, still in process. Uh I do have to meet with him and go over a couple of things.
So do you wanna just discuss some of that stuff today and?
Yeah, yeah, however you guys wanna do that, because mainly, the main thing is the only discussion he has is on page three, I think is where I highlighted, there it is. He doesn't think we even need that language in the, in the bylaws. My purpose of putting that language is just with the simple fact of being able to carry out the ability to sign contracts like Blue Cross Brazil, Medicare, um Medicaid, those kinds of things. He thinks that's just part of the, the day-to-day process of EMS, so that language doesn't really need to be included in there. Other than that, he just, he wants to do a little changing on the language of the, on the signature part. On the last page, I did do a little bit of changing of that from what, the one that I sent you guys to your packets, but that's the only two things that he wants to sit down and discuss with me. Is probably removing that once I do highlight it, then updating the, the signature language on the last page.
So why don't we bring that on again next week?
Okay, we have advisory council meeting tonight, so I'll also give them a copy of this. I had given them a copy of the original last week and had them give me updates what they thought to be changed in this, which I changed prior to giving you guys a copy and giving Todd a copy, so there probably won't be a lot of issue on their side, it'll just be a matter of getting the language cleaned up with the county attorney before we pass it.
So let the record show that we will review it again next week for any changes made. And we are up to the press release.
So we put together a press release just to put out information regarding the change with EMS coming up, um kind of after last Tuesday's board meeting with the possible change of the language within how we can spend the levy money, um I kind of put up pause on the press release as well. We have got some hopefully direction, I'm not gonna say clarification, some direction from different people, um with the understanding that they are gonna make more clarification as we go forward, so I guess that's the best way to explain where we're at right now is we don't have a perfect clarification, but we have direction.
I, I can even add on to that, um John Wells actually sent an email, uh eight twenty-two here this morning. There is a temporary fix that has been done, this fix is only good for a limited time, the legislature will need to act at some point during this session, so I, he doesn't, doesn't go into specifics here, but um looks like we have something that kind of covers us for now and then we'll have to continue to work with them to make sure a legislative, the legislative intent gets clarified. But um the letter from the AG's office that you had shared pretty well clarifies it to me and Dave Rowley felt the same way, he also responded this morning at eight twenty, so.
Well, the intent of the law that they passed was to have the.
Yeah, I.
Yeah.
I don't know what kind of legislative fix we really need, but I don't think it would be that hard to get. but I don't think it would be that hard to get something accomplished.
People that I talked to, basically that section six, four twenty-two, eight point six, they're just gonna rewrite that language, because that language that's in there is actually from nineteen ninety-two. Um, so when they redid this, sent about six fifteen and redid four twenty-two language, that wasn't addressed. So that language carries forward from nineteen ninety-two, so at thirty-plus years old, something they got overlooked, so. Their full intent is to get that language corrected. Um, also been in conversation through this whole process with Lieutenant Governor Greg's office, so they're also on this, working on this. Um, they've been in contact, actually they want to come out to Sioux County. Um, they want to send a meeting with me and, and most people in county between February eighth and February tenth. I don't have an exact date or exact time yet, but as soon as I find more out on that, I'll let you know. Um, so he's invited, he's coming up to Sioux County to work with us on EMS issues and EMS, what we're doing over going forward and what the governor's office can do with their new pilot program that they're coming up with as well, so. Could be a good opportunity for us if not to move forward to something, at least have a conversation with the governor's office.
We've kind of, we've been game fated on EMS so far.
For the last two, three years, we've kind of, kind of been, you know, there's times I wish we would've stepped back and not taken the lead on everything and followed more like everybody else has been, but it is what it is and we're moving forward, so.
Always gotta do it.
So anyway, as far as the press release goes, um, my thought was to put this in all three papers of the county. I don't know if you guys have any input on that or changes you'd like to see, or you want me to continue to hold till we have more direction from legislation or what, that's, that's up to you guys.
I don't have a lot of fear that they won't do the legislation.
I have zero fear right now from what I've heard and the people I've talked to.
I, I don't think we're gonna have an issue with it anymore, so.
Unless somebody has a.
I was surprised at how fast we got responding, I started on Tuesday, and by Thursday we had answers coming back. I mean, that, that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
So.
That's unreal in county and state government.
It is, I mean, it's, how, I have no idea. I guess, I guess we contacted the right people.
Definitely.
Um, I also contacted several other centers around the, around the state that are also either passed this levy or in the process of passing levy, and they got it on the phone too, so it wasn't just me calling the state. We had support from others from the state as well.
Yeah, when, when Harder and I had the conversation with our representative Sanders, that was, that was very.
And I really think we've had Governor Greg's office put a big push on getting an answer, I went to, because they were very receptive from the time I got hold of them and they kept me in the loop and I was, I was happy with how that went.
Yeah, and what the groundwork you had done on it supported our conversation at the Capitol, so that went very easily. But they were obviously, they were not aware of the issue or potential issue, so.
The thing that surprised me was the, the letter we got from the Attorney General's Office, did you guys look at the date on that?
I saw the date on that, it was last year in December.
I mean, that was, I was, I saw that date and I was like, this conversation would've never had to go where it went if that was released, instead of them just making a, a ruling like that and keeping it. I don't think it went anywhere, I don't think it went anywhere. I think it saddened their office, it didn't go anywhere.
I don't know, but the, the opinion I have of how that was handled from the state auditor's office is not very good, because that, that should not have been, uh, staff members saying, oh, I read the code and this is what I think. That it, it, it's much more serious than that and it should've been handled that way, so. I, I think there's some accountability that maybe needs to be addressed in that regard, but. As I said, the, the letter from the AG's office was before this comment was made, so they should've done more research before putting that out.
Do I have a motion to approve the press release and have Phil publish it in three papers?
On that, do you think we should take out the yellow highlighted piece, or is that, was that added after?
No, that was just something that, um, so I worked on putting this together with the city of Algonah as well. That was a piece, piece they put in there, um.
Technically, I don't think it needed.
I don't either, that was my, it makes it more confusing than what it needs to be.
Yeah, and, and that's not a good thing in press release, so.
I'd take it out.
Their, their intent was, I mean, nothing changed on how we proposed the tax levy, it's just the only thing that changed was when we receive the funding, so. I don't really think there's anything we need to clarify other than, hey, we're starting.
Oh, I just see there's, looks like the third line from the bottom half is missing an A after so it's E.
Okay. Whole half?
Just, uh, just type.
Anybody have anything else?
Can I take this to the advisory council meeting tonight and make sure they don't have any further? They've, they've seen this as well, but make sure they don't have any things they thought they'd like to see adjusted or.
Okay.
Is that sorry?
Why don't we give you a motion so that you can publish it right away and not wait a week?
Okay.
Anybody wanna make?
And that's what the change is?
Yeah.
Well, if there's any material changes, I'll bring it back, I don't foresee any material change.
Whether you can take out the paragraph that's highlighted.
I would remove that paragraph and.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that motion.
Mr. Sackor makes a motion, do I have a second or a motion? Second by Whacker, any more discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Most, most you carry. Thank you, Phil.
You bet, thank you guys.
Thank you.
I told you guys, you need to take it out.
Yeah, but I think maybe.
No, that's their problem.
I think literally the third floor of the screaming down. I think all four of them have problems.
Yeah, that pole's a little bit, it blocks a lot. It is nine AM and we can have the discussion on EMS parking lot.
So in the Algonah code and as well as the state code for parking, it does reference fire stations and as a public safety as well, um, emergency management, EMS, law enforcement are all considered public safety. So in the Iowa code three twenty-one point three five eight, it says within twenty-five feet of the driveway entrance to any fire station and on one side of the opposite side of the entrance to any fire station within seventy-five feet of said entrance with a properly signed posted. Down on thirteen, it says any place where an official sign prohibits stopping and parking. Um, speaking with my colleagues in the emergency management field, uh, they do have those such signs because they are deemed to public safety as well for their buildings to allow them in and out of their buildings where they have their equipment or they have training and so forth. Granted, when this building was purchased, that parking lot was shared with the complex to the north. So prior to that, it's empty, um, prior to that, they had a gentleman's agreement to use that parking lot. Well, that's a gentleman's agreement, there wasn't anything in writing, so it sat there for two years or so. So they did have that option to speak out and come up with an idea of enhancing their parking lot for that building. Prior to this, when we had our first meeting regarding parking, solutions were brought up to the complex owner about maybe looking at how they can increase their parking as well. Um, that has not been done either. One of the, one of the things that they also brought up was, you know, I want my customers to be able to park in front of the building, so we have to park elsewhere. So two weeks ago when we had the rain, customers weren't parking always in front of the building because the owners, uh, business owners of those places were parked in front of there. Um, we've had semis parked in the parking lots, um, I had cars parked in front, um, to the south. If you wanna look there where it says the drive-through liquor store, there is garbage cans there, ductors. We had a couple of the employees parked there. We have to go clear in front of the building to, almost to that building to get that retrovalerant out in order to get it straightened and back up. We have to also come in from the north, which the driveway is to get into that building. Parking lot is right here, we have to swoop all the way around and come up this way to get in to the building. So I was supposed to designate a spot for them, they started parking where those cars are at. I left it there because I thought that was probably the most appropriate place. We cannot go up here and they cannot come down here because of the, the turn angle. This is fine and dandy if they park there, but the, they keep getting closer and closer to the drive-through park or there's more people that park, not just here, it's all the way up here. Therefore, it delays trying to get in, potential for incidents of a car taking hit, or either that delayed me getting out. Not just my responsibility of getting in and out, but it's also coming back to liability to the county. So what happens if the county doesn't get out there and, and get ice melt down in time? If somebody falls in the parking lot, who's reliable, who's responsible for that? Cause in our policy, it does say that we are responsible to monitor that parking area and update and keep it clean. Who's responsible? Secondly, we have the drive-through alcohol convenience store there. Not saying that everybody's drinking and driving, but it does happen, but what happens if somebody is going through that, that drive-through and then they are already intoxicated and buying more alcohol, they get in a crash, they hit a pedestrian, it's in that parking lot? Who's responsible, who's liable? That falls back down because it's not pounding harder. I'm just asking that we look at this wholeheartedly and figure out a solution, not just from my standpoint, but for their standpoint, and I also ask that they also put in effort in looking at their parking situation in front of the building as well. We don't park in front of the fire station, we don't use the parking lot in front of, at the fire station. We don't park in front of the EMS bays, they are allowed to get up. Any of the EMS services in the county, no one parks in their area. They have to be able to get their equipment out. When am I gonna have an emergency? I don't know, I don't have that prediction. If I could say my emergencies are gonna be after hours, so I don't have to worry about parking or I, in between this, I would love that. But I don't have that, that ability to determine when my emergencies are happening. I just don't wanna be delayed in getting equipment out to an emergency and it falls back on emergency management. That should not have happened in the first place, so I'm asking you to consider this wholeheartedly for the best of the good for the county for emergency response, which is part of emergency management and responsibility of supervisors.
So what is your proposal? How do you, you know, how, how do you wanna see this kind of work out, yeah?
Well, I, you know, the whole time we haven't said a whole lot, we've allowed them to park there. I would like them to start to figure out a way in the parking lot first, and then we can sit down and look at the rest of the parking lot, what needs to happen. But I don't feel like, well, we're just gonna give it up and let everybody park there. We have public parking across the street, we have, we have multiple options. But just to say, oh, yep, anybody can park there is not an ideal option. You know, law enforcement uses that building for training. I mean, I've had several trainings in there, we've had some difficulties getting some equipment in because of vehicles. So I feel like we need a way, I don't care if we sit down after this meeting or come up with a date when we've sat down and figure out what is, what's best, I don't care, but something has to get, I think it's talking.
There's one question, does the county own the parking lot all the way up to?
Up to the building.
Okay.
Yep.
Do you have a diagram to kinda show where that property line is, where it ends?
There, I'll, I'll pull it up on my phone here. I just, I was, I was looking at this last night when we were visiting, so.
I'm guessing you guys are all yours business owners?
Yeah.
Do you guys have any comments to that that you wanna add?
Yeah, of course, we wanna talk about your apartment.
You can come at least down, I can't see the shade.
So yeah, one, thanks for, I'm Shane Tate here by the way, so I, I own the property, what's that? So yeah, I'm Shane Tate, I'm the owner of the property, um, purchased that about a year and a half ago from Larry Jerome, who had it previously. And, um, we've always had a full, uh, full tenants inside of that, uh, whole entire building. And the biggest thing about the construction of the building is that there's very limited parking spots for the number of businesses that are there, right? And it's not that all the time, you know, there's times where it's obviously slower, but there's times where it's even way busier, you know? So that's the whole thing is where we kind of had our last meeting is that the whole entire goal is to designate somewhere around four to six spots that would be out of the way. So that way, if they need to get in and out, especially with the trailer or whatnot, that we wouldn't be in the way, right? And Chris kinda went back to it, is that those spots really ever should never designate it, never happened. And so if we don't know where those are at, a lot of times it's gonna be a free-for-all in that parking, I can't control that at all. I can tell our employees where they're, uh, any of the business owners and employees where they can actually park if we know where to go to, but any customer, anybody outside of that, there's not a whole lot I can, I can do with that sometimes, especially with, you know, semis and whatnot. I know that, um, the liquor store there, there's a semi that comes at least once or twice a week, you know? And that's how they get their, you know, that's how they get their supplies there. And with that ability, just like they have a hard time backing their trailer in, it's pretty difficult for them themselves kind of to be able to move around as well too, so there are sometimes gonna be in some random spots around there as well. So, so biggest thing is if we can find a way to find these spots, I think that we're out of the way and find a way to designate them as well, um, that'd be a huge part for us. And, cause I was kinda surprised to get the letter, cause I didn't know that there was any, you know, no, some issues. I know like this winter with the snow and whatnot, it's been a mess over there because can't see lines, you have no idea where anything's at, and it is icy and snowy and things like that, so I can understand, especially on like the liability side and if people slip and get hurt, like I totally, totally understand that, and we don't wanna be blocking anybody either. But we really wanna find some sort of resolution with this, because just looking at the outline of where we're at, I don't really know how we could change our parking. There's not, there's no real.
It's not the easiest part.
There's just no way of space, you know? So if you have it in the front, there's no way you can put a second layer really anywhere, and especially in the wintertime, especially on the snow we've had this year, there's not a whole lot of maneuverability when we have big snow piles, and we remove them, but it takes time to get that done as well too, non-business hours for that, and so it just makes our parking really tricky. You know, having people park across the street, you know, in a faraway parking lot, I don't, you know, that's a really great idea either, cause I don't know how well that parking lot's being taken care of, and I don't know how well that, you know, kinda alleyway entrance by one-stop shops being taken care of as well too. And then with it, you know, to be safe going across the highway, you know, I'm not quite sure if that's maybe the greatest thing too. So you can go across the crosswalk, you know, on the intersection of Phillips Street and McGregor there. Um, I don't know how well the, you know, the side of the building there is maintained either to be able to walk through there as well too. So there's just a lot of, you know, there's a lot of conflicting kind of variables with this, but I think the biggest thing is, like I said, four to six spots somewhere as far away from where would be out of the way, like out of the way, I think that's the, the best resolution. But having some sort of easement is the number one thing too for, uh, Elgonah Wine and Beer Shop as well too. Uh, that's one thing, that's a draw for them, is for them to be able to really kinda have that drive-through lane through there. I don't think that they're in the way all that much for the most part, but I guess that's my opinion. So that's kinda like the biggest thing that I, I guess I'm kinda bringing here today.
So one of the things Chris had mentioned was potential angled parking and doing one-way drive-through on your guys' side, have you looked into that at all or considered it?
So if you angle it, you have, what, you have three entrances into that spot, you know, into, into the parking lot, right? So depending where you come from, you have angled parking, how's that?
If you pull in from the north, that'd be a nightmare trying to park at this point.
So if they come in from the south on that, the entrance that goes to the drive-through, they can go in northway and come out on south on state. So they have angled parking on east and west, and a little bit on north.
But it's still.
I, I don't, and I don't know how close. Well, and I don't know how close. I I don't, and I don't know how close they can, well, and I don't know how close you can get to the edge of the highway there either. I don't, I don't know if they have any setbacks or restrictions for safety or any of that way. So that's something to look into.
We can, yeah. I'm sorry that, cause maybe you do some sort of parking close to there, but then again, you're on the highway, wintertime, you got, but the plows that come through there, I don't know how how great that is, you know, either.
Yeah, I was just curious if you.
Yeah, I just feel like our, the way to change the parking lot is I don't know if that's even a possibility.
Chris, is there, within the picture you sent or you gave us here? Um, there was N two cars. I can see how that would be difficult or three cars would be difficult to get in. Is there three, four spots that you can, that we can designate in the middle of that lot as customer parking? You know, to where it allows you enough room, but mark that this is not, you know, the other spots are not for parking.
I I think you're thinking on similar lines of what I had asked Chris last night. So if you if you kinda make an L shape where you come out straight from the door and then have enough room to turn the corner and come down to the driveway. If we block that off, you'd kinda shorten the parking in the middle there by a couple stalls, but then you'd still have the rest. And I guess my thought in on it is getting the trailer out is more of an emergency than getting it in.
Correct.
So if there has to be some communication to get it in or wait till people leave for the day, I think that's easier to manage than throwing up a sign that says no parking and shut everything down. I think that's more cooperative.
Your problem is, is if you start parking cars in that parking lot and customers come, they're gonna think it's a parking lot for customers and they're gonna park willy-nilly and you're not gonna have any control over who parks where.
So I I think one of the things we would have to do in that regard, which I had communicated to Chris last night was somehow, well, basically probably repainting the lot and designating a similar to a fire lane, designating a path where the trailer like in an L shape, I mean, kinda draw it out here. But like this, so you can come up here, make a loop and come in and out. You'd have to test it with your, with your truck and the trailer, see what kinda space you actually need, so you can make that clean, paint out your lines, but you would probably take off maybe two spots on each side on the current parking situation, but then everything else could be repainted and designated, so it's clear. You'd potentially have the issue through the winter with snow, but if people get used to it during the summer, hopefully they would realize and be able to manage that way.
So you're gonna clean the parking lot for public parking in the winter? You're gonna move the snow for public?
We're gonna have to maintain the parking lot anyway for snow, so it's no different.
It's more for order control, not necessarily, you know, you can't or can't park in this lot.
Right.
So then I'm gonna go back to like sometimes the sheriff's department. They had the marketing have impromptu training, and so they have other people come out of the county as well as I also have trainings there. And then they don't have room to park their vehicles because we have customers parking in there. It it still comes back to why should we have to always have to make sure?
I always think that parking is a pretty rare, you know, a rare situation, you know, especially for meetings, it seems that they've been, you know, either, you know, later at night when there's, you know, there's not a whole lot of business going on, but if there's, you know, meetings that are going on, if we have communication between each other, you know, we'll make sure on our end, you know, that we don't have anybody there. Customer-wise, I can never, I can't guarantee like that part of that. But if that's a great situation, if you have your signage, you know, throw that up there a little bit beforehand, then that's probably the best way to keep it. Cause I don't know, outside of, you know, putting a fence around the whole entire parking lot, I'm not really sure how you're gonna be able to keep, you know, non-employees out of that, out of those spots.
I got a question for Todd. So far, the ARCA funds are designated for public use, not for parking lots. And that was purchased with ARCA funds. Are we following the federal government guidelines by letting people park there that it wasn't what the money was designated for in the first place?
Well, this, this was purchased as a county building that EMA is and EMS and the sheriff's office is using the other side. That's a county building. It's not owned by EMA.
It can't be because.
It can't be owned by EMA. It's owned by the county.
Right.
That's the only thing.
But the the original purpose of buying the building was for overflow, for catastrophes and for COVID and that kinda stuff, so.
It was designated for public safety. Are we fulfilling that purpose by having a parking lot? This is my question.
Well, I mean, the parking lot is part of the building in the purchase. I mean, it's, I think what you're talking about is uh you know, the the public use of that parking lot, um which, you know, as pointed out, I mean, it's kind of a a free-for-all right now.
Right.
Uh, but it's it's county property, so you know, as far as the use and it being um in line with the ARCA funding, I I don't think that that's a problem. I mean, that's what it's being used for. It it's being, the parking lot is is part of the building's use, and so I don't think that you'd have a problem with that whichever way you decide to go.
Do you, you see issues on the liability side? Do you think we should have an agreement in that regard for?
Well, obviously, you know, liability is is probably an issue that needs to be resolved. Um, you know, the 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 cleaning off of that, I don't know how often that happens. I don't know. You know, I I rarely go by that. Um, you know, I go to businesses, but I don't look over the, I don't look over at the parking lot, so I don't, I don't know, but um, you know, that's an issue. And I think back in February of last year, we talked about an easement for the drive-through, um that kinda stalled and and didn't go anywhere. Um, I think that that is something that probably needs to um to start being discussed again if the county wants to do that uh for the use of that drive-through. With easements, you can um, you know, then transfer liability, you know, for the person using that easement. So that would be one resolution. I don't know, um, you know, looking at it from a legal standpoint, then easement would be appropriate for parking spots. Uh, because in that respect, then you're giving up sort of, you're giving up the uh um, the ability to control that. Um, you know, so, cause with the easements, you're you're you're, you know, giving up a a property right and possession of that. Um, so, you know, that would be less appropriate, not saying inappropriate, just less appropriate for parking spots. I think uh, you know, some sort of written agreement for the use of of certain um, parking spots would would probably be more appropriate. Um, you know, liability in that respect can uh certainly be addressed. You know, the elimination of liability uh is is certainly a difficult task. Um, usually when situations arise, uh, you know, the first thing they look for is the deep pockets and obviously the county would have deep pockets. Um, so, you know, I think all all of that needs to be addressed, but I think initially there needs to be some effort to try and figure out where we're going to go. I think the easement for the 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 wine and spirit drive-through makes sense to me, um, if that's what the county wants to do. Um, and you know, that's that's kinda where it's all about last year. I think it was just um, left on the table and and not picked up from there. So, you know, as far as where we're at right now, I think the the discussion is appropriate. I think um, there needs to be probably more worked out, it sounds like. Uh, as far as what makes sense with the trailer and the truck and getting that in. Obviously, emergency is is different than, you know, just bringing it in and 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 packing it away. So, yeah, I think that's that's kinda where we need to go.
As far as the building, you know, we're gonna maintain that building for a while. But in the future, we don't know that we're gonna keep it forever. It might be sold, so I have a problem with easement. It's gonna be granted. It's gonna be in perpetuity. I would have a short easement.
I think that's kinda where it's all out. I mean, an uncertainty as to what exactly.
Right.
You know, the 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 county wants to do with that. So, yeah, I mean, that's that's kind of the the position that you have and you're faced with is is what are we gonna do with that, right? You know, the unfortunate thing is is had, it wasn't addressed long ago and it probably should have been um, by, you know, probably no one in this room, um, but we have it in front of us now and we should probably address it in some fashion.
I don't like easements because we have too many troubles with easements right now. That's all we hear about is easements and pipelines.
Well, yeah, that's a little different situation.
I know it is.
Um, but the the easement is just the conveyance of property, a possessory right to a portion of property. Um, you know, so.
So, as of today, I don't know that we can take any action. Is that correct?
Shane, Shane just wants to know what, what what does he need to do or what he needs direction as far as this is gonna be the rule, I guess. Right?
Yeah, we just wanna be as helpful as possible really. And then the easiest part is really just communication, like with us. And as much as I can do to convey to, you know, anybody that, you know, certain areas or something like that to try to be out of the way, you know, we'll do our best to adhere by that, you know? That's all we're gonna do is look for a little bit of some simple resolution. If we gotta go more in-depth to it, you know, it's completely fine.
Well, I'm gonna say if you find three or four spots that you can park in, but it's somebody doesn't park in them spots, they're gonna be towed away. Because we can't have that trailer not being able to get pulled out, cause that's why we bought the building.
There needs to be signage and, yeah, there's gotta be.
I I don't think, yeah, I mean, I think, I think you need to go a little slower than that. I think we, I think we should look at repainting the parking lot and designate a path that would allow the trailer to get out in the case of emergencies. And then, you know, I mean, if you put a a a red outline and stripes through it, I think that would be fairly clear that you're not supposed to park there. And if someone parks there, then yeah, maybe you handle it appropriately, but it, you're not gonna go out and paint lines in the end of January, so.
No, but we bought the building to have emergency management use it. And we didn't buy it for them to be limited. And the sheriff uses it and other people use it for meetings. It was money that was appropriated for it.
There's also a good neighbor aspect to your conversation.
I I mean, I do like the idea of having a, it doesn't need a path. I mean, if you park, if you paint the parking lot and there's no parking lines and people can't park there, it's just kinda a given.
Should be, should be common.
Should be common sense there, but.
You're gonna accept the liability.
Well, with the, our, we're not gonna move forward with a an easement or anything as far as having that discussions, but maybe allowing the liquor store to use that drive-through.
No, I think we, I think we should have that discussion. I think there's some details that need to be worked out, but I think.
At least discuss it.
I think we definitely should have that discussion.
I'm gonna excuse myself. I'm gonna let, if anybody else wants to speak back here, I have to run, but thank you guys.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna talk about it?
I don't know that a full-on easement would be necessary, but if there is a liability agreement between businesses and the county, the, it's, you know, shared liability and not just solely on pursuit county, you know, there could be some stuff worth there as well.
Do you have something?
Yeah, if you guys do allow it in the park there, just a suggestion. If you were the park, were the driveway is now, why don't you go south to the corner of the building, have Bash come in, grind another driveway in. Then you have two entrances. You can come in and out of there. She can pull in there, hug the building, and then maybe you can throw three cars in between the two driveways. They're not in the way as much there. But you have to get permission from the state, cause I've heard all that kind of, we have to watch by state laws all the time.
Are you talking the east side of that building?
Uh, west side of the west side.
South.
Well, the driveway is right now, just go straight south.
Oh, our building. I thought you were talking about the other building.
Right, right.
And then just grind another driveway.
I thought we looked at that. I don't think it was quite that simple.
It'd be nice if it figured out a way.
So if there's any, if there's any cars in that parking lot at all, you cannot use the existing driveway and get the trailer into that building.
Right.
You have to, you have to jump the curb. So another driveway is is the best answer relative to what it takes to get a driveway approved from the state.
Yeah.
They have to be right through that northwest corner of the building.
Then we're gonna have one.
So you can turn in there, you go in front of the building, you turn left and then you can back straight in.
Just consistently dump more money into it.
The other thing, the other thing I would, I can forward this email to you, but I have an email from uh, February sixteenth of twenty twenty-two, so just like you say, just about a year ago. And this was the email we received from the insurance company, um, on their recommendations of how to handle this. And they said, obviously, liability is a concern because liability is automatic. Um, so, for those properties automatically are liabilities on that property. So the insurance company is actually recommending that um, we get some kind of contract in place. They say here, in the absence of easement, they agreed with the county attorney at that time stating that, you know, the easement wasn't the best option because it's, it cannot be renewed, adjusted, or terminated. So they suggested a contract that could be reviewed, adjusted, renewed, or terminated over time. But they want some kind of contract in place that we're allowing people to park there.
Phil, while you have it up, Andy, can you forward that to us?
Yeah.
Who owns parking lot in front of Train Rec?
What's that?
Who owns the parking lot in front of Train Rec? Is that city? I mean, can the workers park there? It's only a quarter block away.
That's all way.
I think it's shared between.
Hold that one. How far does the library go? Just at the end of the building? They're a little bit south of it, right?
A little bit south, yeah. I would have, I'd have to go, yeah, Train Rec owns the parking lot in front of there.
Okay. So that option's open.
Ever Bright Properties LLC actually owns that pro, that parking lot, um, and and the building on the corner. Uh, Train, Train Rec Winery is only the building and a little bit on the north side.
My guess is they have an easement for parking.
Probably.
I really like your idea about painting. I think it gives direction, however, you know, with a penguin chair, you can't do it right now. I I just think that would be a good um constructive thing to do is to do the painting. Um, it gives people direction and, you know, it just maybe would come to an agreement. I understand you have your special events for training and with all due respect, I do love our law enforcement. I do love our emergency services. I just look at the safety aspect of my employees as well as my guests that come into my store as well. I think if there was a means of direction or means of a however you would put it, you know, direction to get into our stores, direction of parking, um, I think that would be a constructive way to go about things. That's just my concern.
Well, do we want any motion or any sort of action? I guess, Todd, do you want direction to proceed working with them with, for a contract or anything like that?
Yeah, whatever you guys wanna do.
I'd like to see the, yeah.
But I'd like to have an idea as to what and where, you know, kinda have some restriction. Yeah, you're gonna have to talk to Chris and Bill because there is one that used the building.
What's the process of talking to the state to? Cause that, cause that big trailer, when you come in, if you can come in right there in front of the building and drive in front of the building and then turn to your left and have the ability to back in, it's about the whole way to get in there, cause that thing is, I mean, we're sixty, we're sixty, seventy foot long by the time you have a vehicle in front of that trailer. I mean, it's, it's a long unit.
It takes a parking lot now.
What does it take to be able to actually have a driveway there versus jumping the curb?
I think, yeah, certainly, the state DOT.
I think you need to acquire an entry from a Midwest country.
Entry permit?
I believe so.
For the DOT?
For your contact.
Well, I'm gonna tell you, you get a driveway in there. I don't recommend any parking in that parking lot cause then the trailer's gonna sit hooked up to the pickup on the road or somewhere else. Well, I'm gonna tell you, you get a driveway in there, I don't recommend any parking in that parking lot, because then the trailer's gonna sit hooked up to the pickup on the road or somewhere else. Cause you can't get it in there with cars parking in the parking lot.
So what what about like the drive-through?
I don't think the drive-through hurts anything, there's nobody's parking there, that's my opinion, but that's just mine.
Yeah, I mean, if that is.
And we still need to enter a contract with them using that part of parking lot as their driveway, because there's still some liability there. And so I think the first step is to drop the contract to share that liability with the businesses and then.
I think the business has to assume the liability if you give them an easement to drive through.
But we're not giving them an easement, we're not handing over property physically. We're allowing them to use that as their drive-through, so.
And I I I don't really agree with, um, just saying no parking today because. We if you can't deal with this situation, since we bought the building, I I think we have better options on the table than button up a sign and saying no parking. I I don't agree with that.
Well, I don't agree with you, so.
That's fair.
Yep.
That's parking on board.
So what's your prerogative today? I don't know, what kind of sharing agreement do you need to use the drive-through? It's not an easement, what is it then?
Contract.
Well, yeah, we'd have a a contract or an agreement as far as the the use of that. And the agreement can be encompassing the uh, the parking spaces too, so, and how how wide. Um, you know, that's probably an important aspect of of the the use. I assume for drive-through purposes, sixteen feet would be sufficient, I don't know, twenty?
But I don't feel like we should do six parking spots, that's that's quite a bit. I think four is plenty for right now, we can always get it and move it forward.
Well, this, uh, my my thought is let's let's get a contract in, um, because liability is an issue right now.
Get working.
Let's get working on the contract and we can line it up for revisiting in the spring when the snow and ice is gone. And we can actually paint the lines and stuff like that and kind of renegotiate things and get things a little bit more sorted out. But for now, let's get the contract in place so we don't hold the entire liability.
We would not be making any decisions today.
No, we won't be making any decisions today on the parking situation, but let's get the liability taken care of. Because, I mean, like I said, we can't really do much with painting lines and things like that until springtime, so. For now, I think the the first action is to get the liability sorted out, get that taken care of. And then set another date, you know, in the spring that we can revisit this and 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 get it, you know, drawn out a little bit more.
Chris, in the picture here, that's the ambulance and the red trailer, right?
Yes, that's close to the curb.
Yep, yep, and I know that's right on the edge of the parking lot as we discussed, but if you use that as a reference. Um, I mean, my pen's actually, the tip of the pen's a little bit longer than the trailer even, and if I take that to the edge of the building. You would take out the two black vehicles closest to the building and the white one as well. So I think, I mean, I have I have stuff drawn on here which would be relatively close to probably what you would need. For access, getting out as a minimum. And I guess I think that's a good place to start, we can, as 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 I said, I think we. Go out with the truck and trailer and see what it actually takes to turn that. And get some stuff temporarily drawn out and then get the parking lot repainted would be my suggestion. But obviously, that's whether it depends, as we've all said.
At this time, I I am so willing, Chris, that we'll take, you know, we'll make sure that.
You guys have been good at the, with the story of the interview. Yeah, I mean, I gave her off a couple times, I said, yeah, we are gonna need to have. Yeah, and you have been great about moving that.
Talking about the parking, you know, our, the employee lot, we'll we'll go in the middle, we'll make sure, I mean, until things get, you know.
I got a question on that, what if we just, you know, block up and you guys only employ parking in that section? Leave the the front of the building for customer parking, because here's the thing, we can go into your guy there. There is an emergency, we can say, hey, you guys need to move your vehicles right away.
Right.
As employees, you know, you guys will be expected to do that, but as customers, we can't, you know, say, you need to move your vehicles right away.
In an emergency, I'm not taking the time to go into every business and say those vehicles need to be moved. I don't have that time, that delays my response, that delays anything that mitigating any gaps that would happen during that emergency.
You have anybody in the.
And if they're getting a treatment done, then they can't get out of out of their, out of taste, treatment table or whatever to come out to move their vehicle in the middle of of a treatment. So I I think that part of, if there's an emergency, I can come in and and tell somebody to leave or I need to get, that's that's not.
And in addition, in addition to what Chris said, I don't, I don't know that that's a great viable solution. Because if you say employee parking only, what's the chances that everybody's gonna comply with that and then who's gonna police it? So I think, I think that could have the potential to be messy.
Yeah, that was just a thought, that was just a thought, but I think for time's sake, um, I'd make a motion to. For Todd to work with the business owners to draw up a liability contract. To address that situation and then draw up a diagram in the, for the springtime to figure out the parking situation.
You don't want that? Give her a second, right?
We need a second for Mr. Whacker's motion.
I will second that.
I'll second, Mr. Sackler, any more discussion? Do a roll call vote, please.
Matt?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Sackler?
Yes.
Jerk.
No. Todd, we gotta have a park stop at ten o'clock or house planned or pulled in.
Judges here.
He's here.
He's there, right over here.
So we can't start at ten o'clock on that?
Right.
That's a fire lane.
Okay.
That's a fire lane.
We can move ours.
What's the. You want a break before we do that?
Well, we got a.
We gotta meet a panel here to.
Resolution for our question and.
We need a break.
Maybe we take a break.
We need to take a break now and we can pick up some art and all that stuff after we get off there.
Yeah. Let's get a break, ten minutes and get some circulation in your veins.
Yeah.